Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Thursday, October 29th, 2020. The topic of this is Solid Waste Advisory Committee for the SWAC Annual Briefing. If you'd like to join in, in the conference call, the phone number is 360-252-9020 and your PIN is 1234. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. We also have Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. And joining via via phone is going to be Commissioner Edwards. We have Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell joining us. We have Public Works Director Jennifer Walker with us. We have Olympia City Councilmember Jim Cooper. And Jim is the Chair of the SWAC. We also have Tom Water Councilmember Joan Cathy with us as well. And she's Vice Chair. And Karen Wies, Interim Solid Waste Manager with us. And we have Amanda Romero.
Solid Waste Utility Planner.
Oh, that's it. Okay, thank you. So with that, am I going right to Jennifer?
I think I'm going to introduce, I'm going to start us out.
Okay, thanks Karen.
So Karen Wies, Interim Solid Waste Manager. So Commissioners, thank you for your time and opportunity to present to you today. As Commissioner Hutchings pointed out, the purpose of our briefing today is to report on the activities and the work of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, particularly over the past few months and discuss some of the upcoming priorities for the group. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee is a very active body. They have monthly meetings. And over the past year, including a virtual meeting that as they worked through the development of the solid waste management plan. So they are engaged and from a staff perspective, we're very grateful for the work. They provide us expertise and perspective on many solid waste issues. So with that, I will turn it over to Chair Jim Cooper.
Thank you Karen and thank you Chair Hutchings and Commissioner Mensah. And I'm not sure if Commissioner Edwards is on yet or not, but thank you to him as well. I'm really excited to be here and I'm really actually honored to serve as an advisor to the Board of County Commissioners. As you all know, solid waste is a pretty significant topic in our community. And there's a lot of opinions about it and a lot goes on from day to day and actually a pretty big operation for Thurston County. And so I'm glad to be here and and provide you with some information and really hear your questions and comments. I do want to make sure I give a shout out to our Vice Chair, Tom Water City Councilmember Joan Cathy. She's here. And she'll jump in on the slides a little bit with me as she feels she wants to add to the to the commentary. As well, I may lean on Karen, Jennifer and Amanda to kind of help us out if if we get into a technical question that that we can't answer. And definitely Karen's gonna do a little spot during this on sort of the reorganization within Public Works and and Communication. So. And and a shout out to Commissioner Edwards, you know, he'll watch the tape hopefully that, you know, it's really great to have him serving and playing that liaison role back to the county commission and and the and the board staff. So that we're feeling well connected. It's it's an important role. And you know, and I think before we start the slideshow, I just, I I'm prepared to do this Supreme Court style. So if you want to jump in and interrupt in the middle, feel free and we'll we'll adapt. You know, we probably only have 20 minutes worth of slides and we have an hour. So feel free to jump in and ask questions as as we move along.
We've already eaten up some of that hour too. So we got about 46 minutes or so.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that that works out well.
Okay.
Um, okay. So Amanda, if you can get the the slide deck pulled up, that would be wonderful.
And as she's doing that, I'm going to confirm for the record. Gary, are you on? Gary Edwards, are you there?
Yep. Yes, sir. I am here.
Good, thank you. Do you have the slide deck?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Great. And then I'll just re- repeat my thanks to Commissioner Edwards for serving on the SWAC. It's important to have that connection. If you didn't hear that, between the the committee and the Board of Commissioners on a regular basis. So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so let's go to the to the next slide and just just a foundational slide on the, you know, the laws that govern the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Both RCW 70 point, 70A point 205 point 110 and Thurston County Code 8.22.020. And and really this is an advise, assist and review job. So we we don't make policy. We don't, you know, adopt policy, but we advise the Board of County Commissioners. We review different ideas and projects. We assist with development of new programs. And then I think the the big role of the SWAC is to review and comment and recommend actions within the the solid waste work plan, the solid waste master plan and the the county budget around solid waste. So. Any addition, you know, Joan, do you have any opening comments you want to make before we go into this? I said, I should give you that space.
No, I'm just here to make sure that you get it all right and that we cover all the good and hard work we've done and the things we're proud of in this past year. So.
For sure.
I'm here.
Okay. Well, and then to that note, I think before we go to the, you know, into the meat of this, the, you know, it's been a a wild ride. I've been on the on the SWAC for two years. This is my second year, so not quite two. And it's, you know, Ben, a a real journey to get us to a place where the SWAC and the staff feel like we're in a strong collaborative role. We have good give and take back and forth and we're working together towards the same goal. And, you know, no blame on anyone before, but you know, there's some been some staffing and SWAC changes and different opinions about how to how to move ahead. And I feel like we're in a really good place right now and I like to continue that and and really. And and for me, that's continuing towards, you know, Karen and Jennifer getting to the point where they have a solid waste manager that can take that role. So they're not all wearing extra hats in their day to day, day to day work life because I know it's really challenging to keep it all going. So we're looking forward to to that. Um, let's go to the next slide, Amanda. So hopefully you can see this on your screen. Okay, just a a representation of the of the membership of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. 15 positions through the county code. And I, you know, a couple of things I'll say about this. One is we have, I think, really deliberately also added the Department of Ecology to the SWAC as a non-voting member. It's not really, you know, set up in the code, but as a committee, we've agreed and we've added Peter Lyon from the Department of Ecology sits at the table with a name tag or a virtual name tag now and and participates in the conversation as a non-voting member. And that's been really helpful to make sure that we're sort of ahead of where we need to be rather than, you know, hearing guidance from ecology after we after we, you know, submit a report or a plan. And so, you know, our solid waste plan is, I would say immensely stronger because Peter was at the table throughout the conversation. And so we were able to hear his feedback and input as we went chapter by chapter. And that's really exciting. You know, the other thing I would say, and you can notice here, we have four vacancies. And the, I think the thing to to note here is we're starting to get to a point where with four vacancies, we're waiting at the beginning of a meeting to establish a quorum. And so it would be really helpful to have a conversation with the board and with Romero about how to how to fill this committee up, you know, the, I think the business, business interest is probably the easy one. But when we look at South County representation from Rainier to Nineo and Dakota, you know, they're really important parts of the conversation. You know, they generally have an opinion and and sometimes they struggle to have the time to to participate in inter jurisdictionals. And I know with our, you know, setting up of the Regional Housing Council that I chair with Commissioner Hutchings as the Vice Chair, you know, we're struggling to get their input there too. And I I have a sense that there's a regional issue that we need to try and figure out how to bring their voices to the table in a different way throughout inter jurisdictional conversations. And so, you know, that's something I'd love to participate in or or strategize around. But I I do think it would be kind of, it'd be helpful if we had a little bit of a strategy around how to get them to the table and make sure their voices are heard, even if they can't participate regularly in inter jurisdictionals, you know, just just as a thought. But but any any help you can do to help us fill those, we we have been recruiting for actually almost this whole year for the for the business representative also. So if you know, you know, a business leader or business owner in the county that you think would, you know, fit with the, you know, diverse values across our county and 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 diverse, you know, ideals that could sit at the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and be helpful, send them our way. We would love to have another member at least if you if you know anyone. And I I know that a lot of you do interact with local businesses. Uh, we are, I will say, we are well represented in solid waste businesses. So I think, you know, someone who's a customer or a self-hauler or something else that's not necessarily part of the formal system would would be advantageous. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So I I just want to, you know, give a huge shout out to Thurston County Shaft and and I I couldn't be more happy. You know, you have an amazing team from top to bottom. And every single person that I interact with has the priorities of the residents of Thurston County top of mind. They understand, you know, their responsibilities, working for the commission and working for the community. Uh, and and that is represented in how they hire and particularly in how they've been restructuring Public Works and the and the team, especially around communications. And so I'm going to just have Karen talk for a minute about that new org chart and and these communication staff before we move on. Karen?
Great, thanks Jim. So what you're seeing is a slide representation of a recent reconfiguration we've had in our communications group. So rather than have embedded communication specialists in the various divisions, we have formed a comprehensive communication team that's led by our communications expert, April Lee. And so this just provides an advantage for our department to take advantage of the teams, each of their unique skill sets, provide flexibility and adaptability to be able to respond to and meet the department's needs while still prioritizing our goals of our solid waste division. So you can see there's a couple of vacant positions. We are in process of filling, will be in process of filling those over the next period of time. But we're already seeing the good results from this reconfiguration, this more comprehensive communications team. And they've, you know, they're really flourishing together as as we've made this change. So with that, Jim, thank you. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you Karen. And it's been really great to have the the communication support, you know, having, you know, press release and and public process around the the solid waste management plan really takes communications expertise to get the word out and make the materials friendly and and not not make it look like you're walking into a really thick volume of government plan. And and they did a really good job with that. And I'm sure you've you've seen those materials from those public meetings or I think in your packet for this briefing as well. So now, next slide, please Amanda. So the biggest work that we've been doing for the last two years and actually really probably the last four almost is the solid waste management plan. And, you know, as you can see, you know, we we have been working hard and the, you know, I think the 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 current plan was established in 2009 and we were really hoping, or the committee was really hoping and the staff were hoping that we would have a new plan ready in in 2019. Some some hiccups along the way with staffing and consultants and changes in laws and changes in priorities. You know, I really know single entity to be blamed for the slowdown, but really resulted in us having to to sort of step back and start over. And there was a little bit of cost to that. So thank you to the commission for supporting that work and and bringing on the new consulting team, which I should give a shout out to, and I've forgotten the name of Wendy's firm. Karen, can you help me?
Yes, HDR.
So HDR Consulting and and I see them as really leaders in the state in solid waste planning. And so we're really, it's really a blessing to have them helping us and being at the table. But we, you know, as Karen mentioned in the opening, we had two virtual retreats. And so, you know, you you all are doing Zoom pretty much all day and you know how hard that is. And so to sit through solid waste planning, chapter by chapter, is not exactly the most exciting thing you could do. And we we really had a good time with it and we and we got through it. And and I think that we have a really strong product. And in some ways, I think it's stronger because we were virtual. Like, we actually put a little more time into the chapters and we split it into a couple of meetings. So we didn't get worn out. Uh, and you have a really good product that represents the community and the needs of, you know, both the industry and the environment and local government all at the same time. And it's it's really well balanced, in my opinion. And one of the, one of the big things that we've done here i- in the plan is connected it to the the climate master plan that's being worked on. So the draft climate mitigation plan is out. The 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 solid waste plan that's at the Department of Ecology for comment is connected throughout to those, you know, sort of that higher level goal. And the Solid Waste Advisory Committee was briefed last month on the draft plan. 2% of our climate emissions in Thurston County come from solid waste. Uh, and so it it is definitely a a piece of the pie and something to be thinking about as, you know, the picture behind me, as we roll around with diesel trucks all over the county back and forth. You know, what are the opportunities for efficiencies and and different ways to serve the community and and reduce our climate impact at the same time? A a great example is the, um, you know, in local hauling is the way the city of Olympia has moved from, you know, both sides of the street collection to one side of the street collection and reducing the truck routes by half. Not only does it save us emissions, but it allows us to not have to expand routes and trucks with the growth of the community as fast. Can I go to the, uh, go to the next slide? And I think it's a timeline. Actually, we have the mission statement from the plan and really goes to the comments that I made, you know. It really well balanced. It's about health and environment and that protecting our natural resources and making sure, as my, as my eight-year-old daughter says, making sure that that garbage doesn't end up in the Puget Sound. And and I think that's, you know, the 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 beauty of working together as a region is we can think about that waste stream from, you know, from picking the packaging up off of the shelf at the store to where it goes in the end game. And and in, you know, you may or may not know this, but, you know, commercial stuff is really tightly regulated around waste. But once it hits a residential household, you know, the regulations are not as strict about the end, the end, the end place. And and our communities do a really good job keeping and capturing, I think, that that waste stream and putting it in the right place, whether it's in recycling, at Silver Springs with organics or to the landfill in Eastern Washington that's generating enough power to to power probably one of our cities. Next slide. Oh. Okay, sorry. I'm I'm in my mind, I'm confused about the order. I apologize for that. So one, one component here in the in the plan is the Contamination Reduction and Outreach Plan. And so the legislature put a new law in place that requires us to have a a crop, a contamination reduction and outreach plan. And this is tied to the contamination that that exists within our recycling system. You know, so garbage that's in the recycling, you know, examples from my household that are, you know, we have to pay attention to or, you know, not rinsing out our cans, you know, throwing a food covered pizza box into the recycle bin when it can't be recycled. You know, some of the, you know, the waxy coated cardboard, you know, milk cartons and freezer containers that are not recyclable. You know, so that contamination actually, you know, hurts the system and increases our costs because someone has to pull it out. And depending on where it goes, you know, the load, the entire load could be rejected based on a certain percentage of contamination. And and this is a really exciting place because we were not going to insert the crop into our into our draft plan that was submitted to Ecology because the Ecology was still working on the guidance. And Wendy from the consulting firm wrote a chapter and we looked at it and we decided we should wait until the Ecology guidance came out. So right before, actually, like a week after we submitted, the the guidance came out and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee just happened to be meeting and we were able to insert that and submit it back to Ecology based on comments that we met their guidance. Uh, and at that place, it set us up to be the first county in the state to submit a crop and probably a leader now in crop development across the state. So that, you know, not, you don't just have the state version to follow the outline of, you have the Thurston County version that is an actual crop to to look at replicating for for your community. So it's really exciting and we couldn't have done that without sort of Wendy and Jennifer and Karen, you know, playing the back and forth with Ecology and and getting them to to think about it the same way we were. So. Okay, next slide is the is the timeline. And I, so, you know, we're, we're pretty far through this process. We're waiting now to hear from the Department of Ecology's comments on the on the entire plan, including the crop. We are at a point now where this bottom part of the timeline is probably all extended by about one month. You know, so we are hearing from Ecology that they will be using the entire 120 days of review almost. And with the holidays, it will probably be the January meeting before the Solid Waste Advisory Committee will be able to go through the comments from Ecology and make recommendations back to you for changes. So just take that with a, you know, everything that says November or December is is really December or January and that kind of bumps the entire timeline by one month. So yeah, so that's my comments on the timeline. And I think we take to our last slide. So a couple of other things are going on besides this giant planning process. So the first one is the flow control ordinance. And this is something that's really common in larger counties across the state, you know, to really put a regulation in place that that says where a solid waste goes. And 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 the basis of that is, you know, it's generated in our county. It goes to our our Waste and Recovery Center. And if it doesn't go through that, then the county staff know and have the ability to provide variances or 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 allow for specific, for specific places for it to be disposed of. And I, this is another place where, you know, the the tension in the Solid Waste Advisory Committee shows up between, you know, the needs of industry and their business needs and the needs of local government and then the needs of our residents and the environment at the same time. And I I want to give another huge shout out to staff because they looked, listened to everyone and wrote a policy, you know, the end policy that's in front of you is is really well balanced. And I think that it brings in to play everyone's comments and it allows for you and your staff to 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 accommodate some some specific needs if they if they arise within that flow control ordinance. And as I, as I understand it, oh, I'm sorry, Karen, I, is that, is that, is that the public hearing in November?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So so you have a public hearing on flow control scheduled for November 17th at 4:00 PM. And I think you just set that calendar. So it'll be interesting to see what what comes out of that. And I I've been really clear with the committee, we've done our role. So if you're hearing from individual members of the committee and and trying to influence that policy, you know, we we told them, feel free to engage with the commission as individuals or businesses or jurisdiction. But you've heard from the SWAC in in that, in in that process and and the staff have done a good job accommodating and incorporating that. Uh, the RFP, as you all know, you've had conversations just like we have, the, you know, the the handling at the work is up for a new contract. And I think that, you know, one of the tough spots when I got on the committee was how do we do an RFP with members of the industry weighing in, but not not writing it so that they can apply and get the job, right? And so, um, it, you know, it was a really tough thing to think about. And 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 I think the staff came up with a really good thought and they and they brought together a committee of the local government, members of SWAC who all signed a non-disclosure agreement and they wrote the, they they worked together to write the 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 pro- the request for proposals. Uh, and then before it comes live, I, it's kind of genius is, you know, they they provided a comment period for prospective applicants. And so that comment period has ended. Uh, the staff have heard from three of the four prospective applicants that they're likely to apply. They've had one-on-one meetings with them and then they will provide official comments to staff by November 18th. Those, those companies are Waste Connections, Waste Management and Republic. The fourth company, which I didn't write down, has decided not to participate in the process at this time. And so we'll see where that goes. Once they provide comment, then I think right around the first of the year, the RFP will go out and it's final form. And then the process will start to, for them to apply and 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 have a decision-making really at the board's level. And and we're here to serve you in in whatever way you need in making, making that decision. You know, the staffing transitions I opened with and I'll close with, you know, it's really important that we get a great solid waste manager. It's a big line of business for Thurston County and Karen and Karen are working really hard on that. And I think, you know, one of the challenges with the with the pandemic is, you know, weeding through the piles of 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 different kinds of applicants. I've been doing some hiring at work and the pools are really strange. Like, it's different than you would normally expect. And you have people that look more qualified than they should be for the jobs that are applying for and 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 just a lot more, a lot of extra emphasis in in sort of that sorting and narrowing process. And so it's taking a little more time. Uh, and we, we're really hopeful that we'll have someone in place hopefully soon after the first of the year to to start driving the ship. So Karen can get back to her real job. And and it's so important because there, because the line of business is so big and just tracking the dollars and cents is is a big deal. You know, we're working hard and then one of the big things we'll focus on this year is education and outreach and digging in on those work plans and and how, you know, particularly the jurisdictions and the industry members can help tell the story of solid waste, especially as we think about how to reduce contamination within our recycling streams. Uh, and then the the final point is just that we really need your help with recruitment. And, you know, if there's a bigger conversation that you want to have with the jurisdictions around representation on inner jurisdictions from South County and how to how to think about that, you know, I'm volunteering to be a part of that conversation because I think it's really important that we have their voice and and that they don't feel like things are being done to them when they're not at the table or they don't have the resources to be at the table every time. So with that, I'll I'll ask Joan, do you have any, any comments that you'd like to make? And we can open it up and see what kind of questions the commission has.
Well, one of the things that, excuse me, that I'm, that I'm proud of is that we're kind of bringing back to life our education and outreach, which we have really felt was important along the way. And we've struggled back and forth to make that happen. I've been on the board for a while. I don't know, four, five, six years. And we had a period of time where where we weren't communicating as well with our jurisdictions and with one another and just the the importance of this whole solid waste enterprise. And so one of the things that I really appreciate that this staff has done is to put back the emphasis on how we can, as a county, impact how people, not you, solid waste, but they understand what it means, what it means for them to be participating in it, do, as Jim said, doing it right and so forth. And also, I, I think that this will put some education and outreach into into schools. And that's, am I, is that, is that
Oh, you're good.
one of the long-term goals here? Yeah. And and when we had some of that before, it really made a difference because young people told their parents how to recycle. And, you know, and and so, and I think that this is, um, this piece of of every, of this plan really is a star in the cap of the county in how, in how we we see caring for our our resources and and our environment. We, we put some extra language in this year about equity and and about, um, you know, and and about, about the environment and about sustainability and, like Jim said, some things that were taken out of the the larger plans in the community. So I I think we not only have a very broad and integrated plan, but I think it's workable. I think it's, it's something we can get a hold of and 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 do. So I feel, I feel proud of it. It, it has been a lot of work. It's been a year, several years project as it's. Uh, it's been a year, several years project as it stopped and started and, and I want to shout out to, to, to the current staff that, um, has guided us in, in this last year. We've accomplished more in the last year and a half, uh, than we did for probably three years, um, it, my opinion. And I've been on the board all that time. So I'm speaking from, from experience and, you know, just from, just appreciate how you all have supported us and how we've worked out a relationship together to represent our jurisdictions and, and to make the county, uh, look like a place that's cohesively working together for, uh, for a big reason, which is this trash. Now I can't remember, um, there's three, three things and I can only remember two, but it, we're working and using the theme re, reuse, recycle, no recycle, re.
Reduce, reuse, recycle.
Use recycle.
Reduce, reuse, recycle.
Reduce, reduce, I couldn't remember. Reduce, reduce, reuse, um, recycle. And, um, I was amazed at, at different conversations I've had with constituents of mine in Tumwater who, um, have that written on their, their refrigerator or that, uh, that their, their kids remember and, um, you know, that we need to, we could reuse that mom and, uh, and so.
To a fault.
I'm telling you, they tell, tell them what to do. Um, but I'm just telling you these things because so much of what we do seems high level and kind of distant from, oh, great, we got a good plan, we're getting it done in a timely way, uh, all of that. But it is making a difference in people's lives and, and the involvement of people in this whole solid waste and education outreach environment, I think is, is broader and deeper than sometimes at high levels you think it is. And so I want to, I want to thank the county for the support that we've gotten and, um, and to Jennifer and Karen. And I want to shout out especially to Amanda who keeps me, uh, reminded on task and she doesn't mind to repeat it more than once so I can remember or get it. So, so thank you. Look, look at all of you and I think that, uh, I feel a sense of teamwork here. So thanks for everything.
Uh, thank you for those comments. And I, I have to echo that our public work staff are absolutely top doggone top notch.
Yep.
Um, I'm, uh, congrats by the way on the SWAC, um, including crop into the, uh, the, the management plan. That is pretty cool. I highlighted before you said it Joan, on the ELO about, you know, supporting the school waste reduction. And I was going to ask, and you already included that, that it's getting to the kids educationally, uh, which is, it's going to be generational of course, if we're going to make any changes. And, um, thank you also for the flow control where we are with that. We're setting the, uh, public hearing from November 17th. That was one of my questions, we have so many things hitting us at light speed. That was, I knew we just dealt with that. What are we doing with it? So thank you. Uh, but one, one question I have, and because we have sufficient time, then I'm going to get to my seatmates. Where in the plan is there references to equity? Joan, you said there was reference to equity in here and I, I don't know where it is.
We, you, I think what you're looking at, and I am, um, ashamed to say that I don't have the plan in front of me right here. I see Jennifer's just lost her, left her screen. She's probably grabbing it. Um, there is, there is a statement in there about, um, one of our goals or objectives is social equity. Uh, and so I, while I can't point that out to you at this very moment, I can certainly send that to you and, and provide that language where we have included that. That was something that we specifically made in addition to, I know during the time period of the solid.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yep.
So while, uh, while that's being sought out, uh, I'll turn to Commissioner Edwards. Any question or comments, Commissioner?
No, I, uh, I think they've done a good report on the overall activities that we've been dealing with. Have you got me on there or am I?
We're here, yeah.
There we go. Uh, anyway, uh, one thing that wasn't, uh, uh, talked about much was, uh, the whole garbage change in, uh, you know, China not accepting garbage anymore and little wrinkle. That was quite a wrinkle that was thrown into the whole, uh, process that had to be dealt with as well. So, no, I think they did good.
Okay. I found the, uh, incorporate principle of equality, uh, as well as the solid waste management plan as one of the goals outside influences. Uh, go ahead, Ty, uh, Commissioner Menshur, you got any questions, comments?
So on education and outreach, my kids remember the reduce, reuse, recycle because of the animal show at the Point Defiant Zoo, all about it. So if we can fund an animal show and bring it to Thurston County School, I think that would be a good use of our education dollars. Um, uh, Jim, Dave Waterson is no longer representing Tenino on the SWAC. I see. Is that, I, I didn't realize that. When did that become true?
Yeah, so he resigned, um, just a, a month or two ago and I'm a little unclear about whether he's even still on the city council. I thought I had heard that he had left the city council.
Yeah, because he was our one on RHC also on the housing group and he doesn't come there either. So.
Right. We, we received a letter, Amanda can correct me, but we received a letter, I believe it was in September, that he was resigning his position and therefore wouldn't be participating on the SWAC.
And he was a really helpful participant, so, you know. That, you know, I don't know if he's involved with the business or not, but.
Right. Um, uh, well, I guess I'm just making the point then that Tenino has been a participant and, and there's a good reason to think that they'll, because I was surprised when I saw that. I mean, Tenino is usually pretty involved and I know they're working on a bunch of stuff related to solid waste. So maybe, so is Rainier, Bukota, are those more long-term vacancies or are those, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
And we have reached out, just so you know, we have reached out, Amanda has reached out, um, to Tenino to ask for a replacement. But, you know, sometimes a letter going to somewhere doesn't quite have the same impact that appear to appear or, uh, outreach does.
And I'm on it now.
So, and I, oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to just say, since you all are talking about education and outreach so much, I want to tell you again, one of the, the great results of our, our communications team is they are, as you know, schools are doing things differently. We're having to figure out how to go about, uh, getting information and education out differently. And they are, um, in the process of working on some revised types of presentations, some 20-minute virtual presentations that would be interactive for and made available to, to school teachers. Um, so anyway, they're in the, the process of developing those in the next couple of months and hope to have them available, uh, either late this year or shortly after the beginning of the year. So I think that's good news to keep on with that, uh, school, um, emphasis.
I wanted to ask about the crop. I, um, when I reviewed the draft plan, I, that caught my attention. There was a reference in there that, that there was new, you know, rules and the county either had to adopt the state or its own plan by July. And I don't think my version of it has the, what you, when did that get added, this appendix you were talking about? Like you said, got kind of put together at the last 11th hour.
I think it was in October af- right after we submitted in, in, or I'm sorry, in September, right after we submitted in August. Is that right, Karen?
That's correct, yes.
So we can make sure that comes to you.
Yeah, because I have the August drafts and I didn't see that. And I'm just wondering, is it, um, in terms of the content of that plan, is it mainly trying to educate on policies we already had or are there policy changes or, or practice, change of practices that, that are in there as well? What, kind of what's the scope of what's in there?
Really, um, so I can read you what the goal of the crop says. It says, "The goal of the crop is to reduce contamination in recyclables collected in the county through implementation of data measurement tools, addressing contamination reduction and establishment of countywide outreach messaging." So there's really an emphasis sort of on this cross-jurisdictional collaboration, uh, messaging, education and outreach aspect. Education outreach is a huge component of this. Um, using waste characterization studies to gave it, to gather data, to inform where our efforts should be in terms of public outreach and, um, you know, trying to change or educate people on behaviors. Um, and in fact, one of the, the, a waste characterization study has been, um, is one of the, uh, implementation objectives of our solid waste management plan and that's scheduled to take place, uh, either in 21 or 2020. So.
And I would add that largely the stuff that is shown in the crop appendix was already embedded in the goals and objectives of the plan. Like we were, we were really well, but we had to, you know, formally drop it in as a chapter by the state law.
Okay. Uh, Dave Waterson is no longer a city council member. He now is, uh, working as a, a project manager, special project manager for the city of Tenino.
Oh.
So the mayor.
That explains it.
He's going to, uh, be recruiting now among his council to get a replacement. Gary, anything else?
Uh, no, sir. I think I've got it. Thank you.
Wow, your timing was impeccable in the presentation, Jim. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you have any, any final thoughts?
No, just, I, you know, I, I think let's continue on this road of building trust together because I think it's really cool to, to be working so strong and it, and it feels, for me, I, you know, I'm on a lot of inter-jurisdictionals and it feels like the relationships are stronger right now than they have been in quite some time, so.
I like talking trash.
It's exciting. Yeah, totally. I like talking about a lot of things with you.
Commissioner, if I may, I, I do want to, um, just echo a little bit of what, uh, Jim said and Joan Cathy, i- in that through the relationship building, the, putting together a solid waste management plan, that the focus was, there's some aspirational elements to it for sure, um, but it's very actionable. I mean, we will be able to implement this plan and, and that is extremely important and, and truly for the betterment of our community. And there was a lot of effort that went into that, um, by very busy committee members. So, um, we at Thurston County are very fortunate to have the solid waste advisory committee that we have because it was a lot of work. And, and, you know, candidly, I don't know that a lot of people were looking forward to doing, you know, a virtual retreat. And so, you know, we, you know, and, and we talked about that and how we would work through that and, and breaking it up into, um, a couple of sessions versus just a one all-day session. But, you know, all of that is as a result of our, our improved communication and, and still with the focus of shared goals. So I, I think, I think the chair, the vice chair and all of the committee members, Thurston County is really much better off as a result.
So it's reduce, reuse, recycle and retreat.
Yeah, right. Well, Jennifer, also, uh, along that line, you, you're talking about our improved communication and everything that's happened and everything we've been able to do here. Um, a lot of that started when, uh, you walked in the room. And, uh, and we as a, as a group felt free to tell you what our frustrations were and what we hoped to accomplish. And we got another chance to talk about, uh, our goals and, and, and our hopes and our dreams for, for, for this, for SWAC, for the county. And, um, and you listened and you heard us and I think then we kind of took off and went to work. And, uh, and so I really, I really appreciate your leadership.
Yeah, she's awesome. Well, thank you, Joan. Thank you, Jim, very much, uh, and Karen and Amanda, thank you as well. And we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. It gives us a couple of minutes break before we get into the next one. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.